And as you can tell, from Commissioner Otten, myself, and all of us wearing the pink masks, this is in recognition of Breast Awareness Month, so we'll have a proclamation of that here shortly. But first, let's start out the meeting with Pastor Tim Manon from Christ Lutheran Church, leading this invocation, followed by a pleasure of allegiance by Chief Nick Adams. So those who will and able, please stand.
I invite you to take a time, a moment of prayer with me. Good and gracious God, we give you thanks on this morning. We give you thanks for the ways in which you are at work in this world, and more importantly, you are at work in our lives and in this community. We give you thanks for the leaders in this room. We give you thanks for those who serve in different capacities, whether that be as first responders, whether that be as folks on the Board of Commissioners, whether that be just citizens who are concerned about their county. Lord, we give you thanks for the ways in which we can gather peacefully and move forward our society. Lord, continue to be with us. Bless us now on this day. Calm our hearts and our minds from the anxieties of our life. Remind us of your presence in a tangible way here and now. Lord, breathe into us the breath of peace, love, and mercy that you continue to remind us of each and every day. Be with us now as we continue in this work. Lord, all this, we pray in your most holy and heavenly name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor, thank you Chief. Okay, we have a number of presentations this morning, and we actually added one in proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so that'll be the third one. So the first one, I believe, is Commissioner Burl.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, I need public safety to go second.
Okay, that's the problem, so...
Do we want to do seniors or...
Uh, let's do the National Senior Day funerals first, so that'd be Commissioner Gamble. Okay?
And then seniors.
Oh, I'm sorry, both of you, alright.
Where did I say it? Sorry.
Can we hold that for you?
Good morning, and thank you for being here with us, and it's a great honor to honor six of our seniors today with some proclamations. So I'm gonna begin with Shelley Olafland. So if you'd like to come up here, please, Shelley. This proclamation, where Shelley Y. Olafland has worked for the AARP Foundation in New York City as an employment specialist for the Senior Community Service Employment Program, helping seniors participate in back-to-work community programs and skills training. Olafland also represented the program at the Department of Labor Workforce Center, career fairs, and workshops, along with nonprofits, government, and other state programs, and whereas, as an administrative professional, Olafland has volunteered her time in service at the Senior Wellness Center and West Cobb and Marietta Senior Centers since 2019. Her generous efforts have helped support office administration at the centers, and whereas, Olafland also worked with program coordinators in the nutrition and volunteer and advocacy programs to provide administrative project support. Her assistance with the Transportation Voucher Program and evidence-based events in senior activities have also been beneficial to many, and whereas, the Senior Citizen Council of County was founded in 1973 as an independent, all-volunteer nonprofit organization to promote the general welfare of Cobb seniors and advocate for better public policy for those 55 and older. National Senior Citizens Day was created in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan to support, honor, and show appreciation to seniors and to recognize their achievements. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor Shelley Y. Olafland as a recipient of the National Senior Citizens Day Award. We thank Ms. Olafland for her tireless efforts to support our community. This the 13th day of October 2020. Thank you. June, would you like to come up? Oh, sure. Did you wanna say anything?
No.
Okay. June, did you wanna say anything?
Oh, I think everybody come up, and maybe better...
Sure, at the end?
Yeah.
Okay. Wait, Ross is gonna get a picture.
Take this place.
It's good off towards the center.
Okay, right.
What do you want us to do?
She's gonna say thank you.
Should I hold this like this?
Yep, you're right.
I'll stand in front of you.
That's where you come in, and I'm blocking.
I'll behave, I promise.
Alright, here we go. Three, two, one, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I just basically wanna say I am truly honored to have been chosen for this prestigious award. I appreciate everyone that has nominated me. Again, my, I pretty much worked at the Wellness Senior Center, West Cobb and Marietta Senior Center as well, so there are so many people I need to thank, I can't remember all their names right now, but I appreciate this, and I am truly honored and humbled. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. If Dr. Betty Ann Cook could come up, please? This lady is a very special individual, not just with our seniors, but volunteers on a lot of other community boards, our Library Foundation, and she's a great friend as well. So, I'm gonna read your proclamation. Whereas, Dr. Betty Ann Cook has extensive experience in higher education and government with strong administrative, organizational, and leadership skills. Her formal education includes a doctorate in educational administration and a Master of Science in Sociology from Atlanta University, and a Bachelor of Arts in Sociology from Howard University. She has also completed advanced doctoral study in statistics and research methods at Emory University. Whereas, Dr. Cook currently serves as the Executive Director of Community Engagement, Associate Provost for International and Community Relations, Assistant to the President for International Relations, Foreign Affairs Liaison, Ombudsperson, Acting Dean, Ostel Campus, and Director of College Research at Chattahoochee Technical College. In these roles, Dr. Cook serves as liaison between the college, the community, and its various stakeholders, providing leadership of strategic initiatives to promote service, partnership, and economic development in the community served. She is also responsible for establishing the Office of Ombudsperson to foster equity and fairness for stakeholders, including students, faculty, and staff. And whereas, in addition to her stellar career, she has been active in helping better our community. She has been recognized as the 200, as the 2015 Woman of the Year by Northwest Georgia YWCA, now Lives Safe, and as the 2013 South Cobb Citizen of the Year by the South Cobb Rotary and Cobb Chamber. Her service and outreach affiliations include The Links Incorporated, Magnolia Chapter, Cobb Mentoring Matters, Carrie Steele Pitt's Home, former Chair, Cobb Chamber, South Cobb Area Council, Board Member, Cobb Chamber Committee on Diversity and Inclusion, former Board Member, Mabelton Improvement Coalition, Cobb 2020, Cobb Paulding Public Health Strategic Planning Initiative, Board Member, Cobb Faith Partnership, Board Member and former President of Cobb Library Foundation, Member Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and founding Board Member of the Rotary of Greater South Cobb. And whereas, the Senior Citizen Council of Cobb County was founded in 1973 as an independent, all-volunteer nonprofit organization to promote the general welfare of Cobb seniors and advocate for a better public policy for those 55 and older. National Senior Citizen Day was created in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan to support, honor, and show appreciation to seniors and to recognize their achievements. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor Dr. Betty Ann Cook as a recipient of the National Senior Citizen Day Award, and we thank Dr. Cook for her tireless efforts to support our community. This the 13th day of October. I told you she served on a lot of stuff, she's a great lady. You wanna say a few words?
Just briefly, I feel very honored, I'd like to thank the Senior Citizen Council of Cobb County, the Board of Commissioners, and I remember as a young child, my mother said, "Love is not what you say, love is what you do." For that purpose and honor my mother, the person who nominated me, and all the wonderful citizens of Cobb County, I thank you for this award, and I'm greatly honored. Thank you.
We gotta get a picture.
Gotta get the traditional picture. Alright, I'll sit, here we go. Three, two, one, thank you.
And now if we can ask Jessica Townley to join us, please? Jessica, we would like to give this proclamation to you, whereas Jessica Townley was born in San Diego and completed her associate's degree with a concentration in humanities at Mesa College in her hometown. She has lived in metro Atlanta for 28 years and spent 25 years as a sales manager, winning numerous awards and accolades, and whereas, Ms. Townley has volunteered with the Cobb Works Cobb Literacy Council, teaching adult learners with second grade up to fifth grade and sixth grade reading levels. For more than four years, she has helped them increase their ability to merge into GED classes and take the GED test. Ms. Townley received Volunteer of the Year for her efforts with this program. And whereas, Ms. Townley has taught line dancing for more than three years at the West Cobb Senior Center, and has been an integral part of the senior center's fundraising efforts, hosting three line dancing fundraisers and raised more than a thousand dollars. Ms. Townley has also taught line dancing for seven years at Enrichment Life Movement at First United Methodist Church of Marietta. ELM is a nonprofit, non-denominational organization for people 50 and older who believe in lifelong learning. Ms. Townley lives by the motto, "Keep it simple and have fun." She has been married for 31 years, has an adult son and one grandson. As an animal lover, she has two dogs and is a dog trainer, and whereas, the Senior Citizen Council of Cobb County was founded in 1973 as an independent, all-volunteer nonprofit organization to promote the general welfare of Cobb seniors and advocate for better public policy for those 55 and older. National Senior Citizens Day was created in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan to support, honor, and show appreciation to seniors and to recognize their achievements. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor Jessica Townley as a recipient of the National Senior Citizens Day Award. We thank Ms. Townley for her tireless efforts to support our community. This the 13th day of October 2020. Thank you.
I wanna thank everybody from the West Cobb Senior Center, Johnny Barfield and the staff there, who've given me the opportunity to teach and to also do the fundraisers and enjoy all of our land dancing activities there, and we hope to get back to it real soon. Thank you for everybody in Cobb County, we love this place, we've made it our home, and thank you to the Senior Council for all their efforts here in Cobb County. Thank you again.
Don't get past me. Alright, ready? Here we go. Three, two, one, good, thank you.
Correct, she's not here. Did we read it in here, or just get a picture? No. Our next proclamation is for Mildred Laverneus White. She is not with us today, so June will take that to her. And is Jeanne Abernathy here with us? Whereas, Jeanne Abernathy is a graduate of Covenant College with a bachelor's degree in organizational behavior. She retired as an owner of a medical transcription company. Abernathy loves to help others and lives by the famous Shakespearean advice, "To thine own self be true." She works every week at the Storehouse Ministries Food Bank and has volunteered with the food bank for more than 10 years, packing boxes of food to give to people in need. And whereas, Abernathy is very active at the Tim DeLee Senior Center, participating in canasta and samba cards and bringing food for those in need. If other seniors don't have transportation to the center, Abernathy provides it. At 75 years young, she takes classes in strength training, kettlebell training, zumba, country line dancing, and soul line dancing, and is a natural leader in all her classes. And whereas, she is married and has three grown children and eight grandchildren. She's a member of Piedmont Church and volunteers to help in the Love Does programs. Abernathy is also an avid reader, completing at least two novels per week. And whereas, the Senior Council of Cobb County was founded in 1973 as an independent, all-volunteer nonprofit organization to promote the general welfare of Cobb seniors and advocate for a better public policy for those 55 and older. National Senior Citizen Day was created in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan to support, honor, and show appreciation to seniors and to recognize their achievements. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor Jeanne Abernathy as a recipient of the National Senior Citizen Day Award, and we thank Abernathy for her tireless efforts to support our community. This the 13th day of October. Congratulations. I'm gonna make this short and sweet. Thank you. Thank you.
And if we can have Julie Boland, our last recipient, please join us? And here's our proclamation. Whereas Julie Boland retired in 2018 after a 34-year career as an epidemiologist with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. She has published research in injury control, chronic disease surveillance, and rare childhood diseases. Ms. Boland earned both her PhD and Master of Public Health degree in epidemiology from the University of Oklahoma Health Sciences Center, and her bachelor's degree in physiology, or I'm sorry, psychology, from Central State University. Ms. Boland earned many accolades throughout her career, including the Consequential Chronic Disease Epidemiology Award, the Special Act or Service Award for developing a new use of public health data, and the CDC Honor Award in recognition of specific work or application that has a significant impact on the public's health. She was also recognized with the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration's Public Service Award, and was part of the Motor Vehicle Injury Prevention Team that was honored with the NCIPC Director's Award, and whereas, in addition to her stellar career, Ms. Boland has been active in helping better her community through service. She is especially interested in expanding voter education and defending voter rights. She is a member of the League of Women Voters of Marietta Cobb and the LWV State Board of Directors, and is the State Program Chair. Ms. Boland also volunteered for several years as a court-appointed special advocate with the Cobb County Juvenile Courts. She worked with that group and several other organizations and individuals to successfully pass a bill to improve transparency of juvenile court proceedings in Georgia. Ms. Boland was also a member of the Toastmasters Marietta and the Interfaith Children's Movement, and is a peer group leader with the Transition Network, a group of women 50 and older who share experiences, discover new perspectives, and make new friends. And whereas, Ms. Boland lives in East Cobb with her husband Don and two dogs. She has a son and daughter and two grandchildren. As a lifelong gardener, Ms. Boland currently volunteers with the Crossroads Community Garden and hopes to eventually become a Cobb master gardener. And whereas, the Senior Citizen Council of Cobb County was founded in 1973 as an independent, all-volunteer nonprofit organization to promote the general welfare of Cobb seniors and advocate for better public policy for those 55 and older. National Senior Citizens Day was created in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan to support, honor, and show appreciation to seniors and to recognize their achievements. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor Dr. Julie Boland as a recipient of the National Senior Citizens Day Award. We thank Ms. Boland for her tireless efforts and support to our community. This the 13th day of October 2020.
Thank you. Join me in holding those? Yeah, thank you. Okay. I'd like to thank the Cobb Senior Council, the Board of Commissioners, and also the person that nominated me. Thank you.
Three, two, one. A little more. One more.
Good, do we get, oh, there she is, Dr. Gibson, please.
Good morning. I'm June Van Brackel, I'm the President of the Senior Council, and I wanna first thank the Board of Commissioners to once again, working with us and helping us to honor these fabulous people. I also wanna give thanks to the staff of the Board of Commissioners for all their work and all their help, and helping us to get this through, particularly Ryan Williams, he put up with me. I also wanna give thanks to Jatan Gibson, Dr. Gibson, from the Cobb Senior Services, who we are constantly, I'm sure she's probably saying, "When are they gonna get out of there?" Because we're always there, and she's always accommodating us in every way possible, and we truly appreciate that, Jatan. And Sandy Penucci, I thank her, and Margie, and Bill Tanks, and I'd like to introduce some members of our board, there's Linda Harris, Inez Finch, I can't see anybody, and also thank you Board of Commissioners, and I really appreciate, and thank you audience for staying here this long, for this beautiful ceremony. Thanks all of you.
Alright. Any of your tip toes, thanks. Alright, here we go. Three, two, one, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Y'all wanna come down for public safety? Chairman, Lisa, y'all all wanna come down?
Okay, now, now we're gonna have a proclamation, does any public safety appreciate of the month, and Commissioner Burl?
Thank you.
Get all the members of public safety to come on down.
Would the board like to join me?
For the picture, we'll do it, okay?
Okay.
Get members of public safety to come on down, please?
Hmm? I know. Oh goodness. Good morning, everyone. Each year, well, I guess I better wait for him. Today we have the honor of recognizing our public safety officers and personnel for the job they do for us every day, protecting us and protecting our citizens. Each year, the Cobb Chamber of Commerce recognizes and, well, nominates and recognizes public safety officers in different categories. And today, I have the honor, and the board, we have the honor of recognizing the nominees and the award winners. So first, I'm gonna read a proclamation in honor of Public Safety Week, which was last week with the chamber. So we're declaring October Public Safety Month, so we wanna honor you all month long and every day. So, whereas, public safety personnel in Cobb and its six municipalities are a valuable important resource to our community. They are our first line of defense... They are our first line of defense in the community, first responders during an emergency, and their presence allows us to maintain a high quality of life. And whereas, Cobb County is committed to providing highly-trained personnel, state-of-the-art equipment, and superior training resources, allowing our public safety departments to reach their greatest potential. And whereas, the men and women of public safety put their lives on the line daily for the safety and security of our residents and the well-being of our community. These brave and selfless individuals deserve our respect and gratitude for their hard work and dedication. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, join the Cobb Chamber in declaring October as Public Safety Appreciation Month and ask all residents to join us to honor the work of our men and women in public safety. This the 13th day of October 2020. Is Director Kreider and Chief Cox here? Sheriff, somebody here? I'm gonna let you hold that. And then I'm gonna also give certificates of recognition and appreciation to all the award winners and nominees. So let's see, who are we gonna start with? Okay. Christopher Hayes, E-911. Okay, Chris is here, and Destiny Davidson, our Director of 911. So, this certificate of recognition is presented to Shift Supervisor Christopher Hayes, Cobb County E-911 Emergency Communications. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates Cobb County E-911 Shift Supervisor Chris Hayes being nominated for the Cobb Chamber Public Safety Awards. In April 2019, Hayes answered a 911 call from a woman whose husband was having a seizure. Having dispatched help within seven seconds, he calmly talked the caller through providing CPR for her husband, and the victim made a full recovery. We salute Hayes for the quick, professional actions and ongoing impact on our community. This the 13th day of October 2020. Wow. Great job. Do you want to say anything?
I just want to thank everyone for nomination. I appreciate everything that the county has done for us, and I'd also like to recognize each and every one of the 911 dispatchers that are not only at work today but work tirelessly 24/7 to make sure that we provide as high-quality a service as we can.
Thank you. Congratulations. Now, we have the Community Affairs Unit, and I know there, most of them are here today over there in blue. Because of COVID, a lot has changed with our community affairs, but I have been involved with them in previous years since this unit was formed, and I can't tell you what a great job they do out in our community with adults and youth and everyone involved. So, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates the Cobb County Police Department Community Affairs Unit on being nominated for the Cobb Chamber Public Safety Awards. The unit, established in 2018, has worked hard to develop strong ties throughout the community. One such effort is the SWAT Santa Program that helps less fortunate families to have gifts for Christmas. Officers raise money for the program by assisting local organizations throughout the year. We salute the Community Affairs Unit for its ongoing impact on our community. This the 13th day of October 2020. The boss is back here.
Yes, ma'am. Just want to keep this all so sweet. I want to thank everybody for making this possible for our unit. We really appreciate it, and we look forward to continuing our service. Thank you.
EMS. Oh, there you are. Hey. Sorry. Cobb County Fire and Emergency Services. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates Cobb County Fire and Emergency Services EMS Division on being nominated for the Cobb Chamber Public Safety Awards. The division went over and above the call of duty in its response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Members acquired and distributed personal protective equipment, created a record to track COVID exposures throughout the Department of Public Safety, and distributed crucial information about the disease. We salute the EMS Division for its ongoing impact in our community. This the 13th day of October 2020. Thank you. Did you miss that?
I'd just like to quickly thank the Board of Commissioners and the Chamber of Commerce for this recognition, and also the Board of Commissioners for giving us the resources and support we needed to help keep our public safety responders safe during the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Officer Quinias Lyles. How are you?
Good. How are you, ma'am?
The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates Cobb County Police Officer Quinias Lyles on earning the Medal of Honor from the Annual Cobb Chamber Public Safety Awards. Lyles responding to a home shooting in December relayed information that helped apprehend a fleeing suspect and then provided first aid to the victims. He was credited with saving a youth's life. We salute Lyles for his heroic actions and his ongoing impact on our community. This the 13th day of October 2020. Thank you. God bless you.
I just want to thank the Board of Commissioners and the command staff and our training staff. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. Thanks for saving lives out there. Okay. And this is the same lifesaving incident with Officer Lyles. And this is for Officer Andrew Abernathy. Hey there. We've seen these guys on TV. Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates Cobb County Police Officer Andrew Abernathy on earning the Medal of Valor from the Annual Cobb Chamber Public Safety Awards. Abernathy responded to a report of a fleeing shooting suspect in December, located the vehicle, and pursued it in a chase that reached more than 100 miles per hour on the wrong side of the road. The pursuit ended in a traffic collision by the suspect, who was taken into custody, and we salute Abernathy for his heroic actions and his ongoing impact on our community. This the 13th day of October 2020. Congratulations.
I just want to thank the Board of Commissioners and my command staff for this wonderful award. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, is this last but not least? Okay. Deputy Tyrone Reed from our Cobb County Sheriff's Office. Yay. You have as much support almost as our police. How'd you do that? Okay. Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates Cobb County Sheriff's Deputy Tyrone Reed, a 23-year veteran of the office, on his selection as Public Safety Employee of the Year. Reed was honored for heroic off-duty actions that involved the apprehension of a suspect at the scene of an Atlanta killing in March. We salute Reed's faithful dedication to his duty and his ongoing impact of our community. This the 13th day of October 2020. Congratulations. Thank you for all you do. Do you want to say anything?
I would like to thank you guys for being here. I would like to thank our sheriff, our Board of Commissioners. I would like to thank command staff and also our training department for that I didn't know, and think this would be possible. Thank you.
And now, if the board will join us for a picture. Do you want to say anything, or Chief Cox?
Thank you. Thank you very much, officers. Thank you for all you're doing to keep us safe. All right, the third and last presentation is designate October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so Commissioner Burl will do that, and asking for members of WellStar to come up. Morning.
And today, we have with us Dr. Mary Chapman from WellStar Kinnostone Hospital, and Mary Ann Hatfield, our Chief of Nursing at Kinnostone as well. So today, this proclamation, whereas, according to the American Cancer Society, over 275,000 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in 2020 in the U.S., and more than 42,000 women will die. About 1 in 20 females will be diagnosed with breast cancer over the course of their lifetime. Women in our country get breast cancer more than any other type of cancer except for skin cancer. And it is second only to lung cancer as a cause of cancer death in women. Women in metro Atlanta have significantly higher breast cancer incidence, death, and late-stage diagnosis rates when compared to the rest of the state of Georgia and the U.S. in general. Cobb County has a higher breast cancer incident rate than both Georgia and the U.S. And whereas, the mission of the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is to educate women about the importance of early detection for breast cancer and to promote mammography as the most effective tool for detection. Early detection and treatment have increased the five-year survival rate for women diagnosed with breast cancer to 90%. However, many women do not utilize physical breast exam, and those 40 and older do not utilize mammography at regular intervals. And whereas, many health organizations continue to support innovative awareness programs, scientific research, and education. Educators, service providers, researchers, and advocacy groups are urged to work together to develop ways to educate more women about breast cancer and to ensure all women in Georgia have access to appropriate annual breast cancer screening services. And whereas, Cobb County is home to WellStar Health System and the WellStar Foundation. And through the foundation, through a partnership with Susan G. Coman and It's the Journey, Inc., has offered a no-cost mammogram program that has provided 1,500 mammograms and diagnostic services to uninsured and underinsured patients. And whereas, during this month-long observance, all county residents are encouraged to join in related activities and initiatives that help raise support and awareness of this serious health concern, which has claimed too many lives over the years, and women across our county are encouraged to schedule their annual mammography. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and further acknowledge Friday, October 16th, 2020, as Breast Cancer Awareness and Pinkout Day in Cobb County. This the 13th day of October 2020.
Thank you so much. We're honored to partner with the Cobb County Board of Commissioners on this important women's health issue, and we do want to say that we have created a very safe process for women to receive this diagnostic test, and we are encouraging all women to come out and make sure that they stay on schedule and not delay care. I think it's fitting that all of the seniors today are women, and our goal at WellStar is to ensure that all of the women that we serve have a long and productive life.
I just want to say that on behalf of our WellStar board and Candace Saunders, who's our CEO, who many of you know, we all are blessed to have the opportunity to work at WellStar and to be your premier healthcare facility. We have an amazing opportunity on a day-to-day basis, even a week-to-week basis, to work with Chairman Boyes and many of you in the room, and we are so proud for the work that we do and that you have our unwavering commitment to continue to focus on doing the right things for the right reasons, and that is patient care. And at WellStar, people care, and our team come to work every day demonstrating that. So thank you for your amazing collaboration. Thank you for your support in the community. And again, Breast Cancer Month, encourage men and women to get breast exams. Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
And we'll get the picture. Here we go. And three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the presentations, right?
All right. At the next part of the meeting, we have a number of public hearings. First one is to conduct a public hearing on the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance. With that, lead Jessica Glenn from Community Development will lead that hearing.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. This morning, we do have a public hearing for Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate. The property is located at 17 Burning Tree Drive in the Atlanta Country Club, and what's being proposed is to tear down the existing single-family home and rebuild a new single-family home. The property is about 2.17 acres, just under 17,000 square feet of it will be impervious surface, so the final impervious surface coverage will be about 18%. It has been reviewed by the Atlanta Regional Commission for compliance with the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan, and they've recommended approval, so at this point, staff recommends opening the public hearing in consideration by the board.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica. All right, so just to give you guidelines here, on any number of speakers, each speaker is allowed three minutes, and if you just let us know where you, who you are and where you live, we'd appreciate that. So with that, I now declare this public hearing open to approve the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance construction of a single-family residence at 710 Burning Tree Drive. Would anyone like to address the board on this issue? Would anyone like to address the board on this issue? Seeing and hearing none, I now declare this public hearing closed. Okay. All right, so now we have to vote on this, as I've been reminded. My tie is fine this morning, Commissioner, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance for the construction of the single-family residence at 710 Burning Tree Drive.
We have a second and discussion. Hearing has seen none. I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass is five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next two public hearings, next one's from the Water Department on the employment of consultant services, and Judy Jones from the Department of Water will lead that hearing.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. We have a public hearing this morning for the Water Systems FY21 Collection System Flow Monitoring Program, where consulting services are expected to cede $100,000 to install flow monitors in our sewer collection system, maintain those flow monitors, and provide data analysis for those monitors. So we ask that a public meeting be opened.
Sure. Okay. I'm just doing some background work here. Okay, so the same guidelines, any number of speakers, each can speak for three minutes, and please let us know who you are and where you live. We'd appreciate that. So now I declare this public hearing open. So now I declare this public hearing open on discussing the employment of consultant services where contract fees likely will exceed $100,000 for fiscal year 2010 Collection System Flow Monitoring Services, program number C0161. Would anyone like to address the board on this issue? Would anyone like to address the board on this issue? Hearing and seeing none, I now declare this public hearing closed. There'll be no vote on this one. The next one is a public hearing on indefinite delivery services contracts for architectural engineering services. And with that, Stephanie Price from Purchasing will lead us in that hearing.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. We request the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing to establish indefinite delivery contracts for architectural and engineering services in four design and engineering categories. Professional services for these contracts are expected to exceed $100,000 over the course of the two-year period. Notice of the public hearing was advertised in the Mary Daily Journal on September 25th, October 2nd, and October 9th. And at this time, we request that you hold the public hearings advertised. This request is for the public hearing only. You'll be voting on the agenda item with the list of firms momentarily on consent.
Okay. Thank you, Stephanie. So again, just a general reminder, any number of speakers, three minutes per speaker. And please let us know who you are and where you live if you wish to address the board. So with that, I now declare this public hearing open to establish indefinite delivery contract for architectural engineering services in four design and engineering categories, architectural, HVAC, roofing, and structural engineering design services. Would anyone like to address the board on this issue? Would anyone like to address the board on this issue? Hearing and seeing none, I now declare this public hearing closed. Sorry? Did I miss somebody's hand back there? Did you want to discuss?
No, no, just a question. Could you explain the meaning of indefinite services?
Yes, sure. Indefinite delivery, what this contract does is it establishes a list of pre-qualified firms for architectural and engineering services that then departments can utilize over the course of a two-year period. So there are no established projects as of yet. So that's the term that's used here.
Okay. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
All right, with that, the public hearing is now closed. Go on to public comment. Mr. Rowley, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Chairman, we have one speaker, Cameron Whitting.
Okay, please, Cameron, you have five minutes to address the board. And please let us know where you live, if you would, please.
Good morning. I'm Cameron Whitting. I live in Smyrna, Georgia.
Okay.
And this won't take too long. So good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cameron Whitting. I want to thank you for your time today. I'm a recent homeowner in Smyrna, and I'm worried. I'm worried about defunding of the police. As a resident of Cobb County who owns property, has a family, and plans on growing my family, I want to ensure that heroes who protect me and my family every day are supported. I have witnessed the destruction around the country where law enforcement is defunded. We as a community cannot have that here. I think everyone knows what I'm referencing. As a private citizen, I started a group called Project Thin Blue Line. We have gained groundswell of support to fund the police. And let me repeat, "fund" the police. A major difference from "defund the police." My message today is that there is overwhelming support for local law enforcement. And this is proven in the awards that were given out today. We ask that the Board of Commissioners increase funding for law enforcement, making sure officers have the most current equipment to keep them safe on the job and perform their duties at a higher level. Increase funding for training and programs that will strengthen their bond with the community that they serve. Any call to inhibit the Police Department to conduct law and order will be answered by the people and how they vote. I thank you again for your time and encourage each of you to consider what has been said here today. Thanks again, and God bless.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your time today.
All right, that's all the speakers that signed up.
Okay. All right, a couple of admin notes. On the Consent Agenda, Item Number 43 from Property Management has been withdrawn. And Item Number 45, there was a scheduled hearing, appeal hearing. This is also withdrawn. That was Item Number 45 at the end of the agenda. I also need to... Commissioner Gamble, would you like to make a motion to add Item Number 47 to the regular agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to add Item Number 47 to our... Do you want it on consent? To our consent agenda?
Regular, yes.
Or our regular agenda, please.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a second and discussion. Okay, seeing and hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass is five to zero. Yes, it's a colored sheet somewhere here.
That's for the consent?
Yes. Well, that's on regular, so I got it starred here somewhere in this 300-page document. All right, now Consent Agenda. If we'll scroll through the Consent Agenda, please. And based on discussing this in agenda preparation, Items Number 24 and 26 have been revised to reflect comments from the Board of Commissioners and the staff. Okay, thank you, Ed. And with that, I move to approve the Consent Agenda as revised and authorize the execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. You have a second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass is five to zero. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, on to regular. First one is Item Number 30, and Dr. McMorris, I believe, will present that.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Item Number 30 is to approve the transfer of funds from the CARES Act Fund to reimburse the General Fund, Fire Fund, and E911 for 20% of the public safety payroll expenditures that was incurred between March 1 and December 26 as part of the Treasury's recommendation for use of eligible funds through the CARES Act.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I move to approve the transfer of funds from the CARES Fund to reimburse the General Fund, Fire Fund, and E911 Fund for 20% of public safety payroll expenditures for the period of March 1, 2020 through December 26, 2020. You have a second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass is five to zero. Thank you, Dr. McMorris. Okay, now the next item is small business grants, and I believe Dana Johnson is part of the... And is Mr. Ewing here? Oh, my Lord, please, please, you're my hero. Those who don't know, Steve Ewing was the chairman of this incredibly hard-working committee, working with Dana Johnson at the chamber to address an astounding number of applications. So these are true, the whole true leadership in the committee itself. So that'll let you carry the presentation, Dana.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. And I'm very happy that Steve is here with me today. And I'll hand the baton over to him in just a second. But what I'm here to do is ask for your approval for the Round Two of the Small Business Grants that are open for consideration today. Real quick, I'm just going to go through a timeline, our internal administrative reviews, talk a little bit about the selection committee, and then the numbers on the grants themselves. So the grant for Round Two was opened from July 27 until August 21. We kept all of our processes and procedures for marketing similar to Round One. One of the big changes we did between Round One and Round Two, which we saw a lot of benefits from, is we kind of did a lot more one-on-one outreach. We told everybody, "Go talk to any business that you know of. Talk to 10 people and tell them about the grant to make sure they're aware of it." And so in addition to everything we were doing as it relates to other marketing, we kind of had this grassroots effort that we did, and that worked out very well on making sure it kind of spread across the county and letting people know about it. Again, we kind of had our press releases that we did through Cobb County and Select Cobb. We did media advertising with the Mary Daily Journal. We also engaged with Cookerly Public Relations. And you notice that there was a lot of local news about our grants in this last cycle. And that was all intentional through our efforts with Cookerly, who did a fantastic job for us. Those testimonials made a big difference in highlighting the people that were helped from Round One, and that helped drive excitement for Round Two. And then we, of course, had our billboards and Facebook ads, which we continued. I'm not going to go over this whole list, I promise you. But this is everything that we did in all of the different groups that we coordinated with to make sure people were aware of it, including webinars with each one of you that we did for your areas and your districts. As far as the administrative procedures, we did have the how-to webinars, dedicated phone and email lines, frequently asked questions. We received fantastic guidance from Malden and Jenkins, which is a local CPA firm, which we could not have done this without them. They have been fantastic on guiding us. We are not experts on a lot of tax forms and tax laws, and they helped guide us and help us get to the right spot so that we could effectively administer this grant on behalf of Cobb County. And we also created the new Finance Committee of Select Cobb to help with the oversight as it relates to our compliance with everything. Our Chamber and Select Cobb teams handled all of the grant processing. We provided temporary assistance where we were pulling employees in from all different areas of the chamber to review applications. And then we also hired an independent quality control team to ensure that we didn't miss anybody and that we were true with how we were evaluating everything. We are continuing, if you approve this today, we'll continue with post-award compliance with technical assistance, reporting training, and as well as post-award coaching if it's necessary for the company. Mr. Steve Ewing, who's behind me, has done an absolutely phenomenal job chairing the selection committee, and I can't say that enough. He had a very large committee, which is difficult. And he, through his leadership and through his expertise, brought them all together and had unanimous vote at the very last meeting because of the phenomenal way that he had made sure everybody was heard, made sure everyone participated, and just did a phenomenal job. Their role was to make recommendations on grant awards and amounts. They created a consistent scoring process. They did blind scoring to ensure no intentional biases. And every single selection committee member signed the nondisclosure agreement and the conflict of interest agreement to make sure it was all being done true and right. They wanted to ensure that all companies that applied were able to receive a grant. They created the financial review, where they looked at gross revenues from 2018 and 2019, rounded to the highest 1,000 within the grant tier. And then companies that did not receive PPP funds were decided first. Those that had received PPP went through the process that was outlined in our memorandum of agreement between Select Cobb and the Board of Commissioners as it relates to how much federal stimulus funds they received would reduce their grant award. After that was all done, we still had to do a further reduction of those that received PPP and SBA funds just because of the sheer number of applications that we had. It was about, everyone received about 59% of what their normal grant award would be. So with that, we reviewed 3,652 applications between Round One and Round Two. We also had about 1,277 incomplete applications. An incomplete application is anyone who starts something in the portal, even if they just set up a username and ID, it's considered an incomplete application by our portal. So in total, we had 3,238 applications that are on your list for consideration today. 2,746 are Tier One, 449 are Tier Two, 43 are Tier Three. It's a total request of $40,521,000. You can see the application distribution by district. And something I'm very proud of is when you look at the application demographics. And what a great, that shows to me the great job that we did on getting the word out to all people across the county about the availability. I am going to hand the mic over to Steve Ewing right now to kind of give some comments about the steering committee.
Thank you, Dana. And I just want to first and foremost thank the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Boyce, and all of the Board of Commissioners. This is, this was a special honor to be asked to get involved with something that was going to do something really good. And this was something that all of you chose to do, to support small business in Cobb County. If you're a small business person listening to this, I want you to really understand and think about your commissioner and the things that your commissioners did to make this possible. This was a gift that they decided that it was their moral responsibility to do to support small business in the county. And I am so proud to have a business in this county. I'm so proud to be a part of this community and live in a place where people care and people put other people first. And that is my definition for what the definition of greatness is. The definition of greatness to me is a person who puts their own wants and needs aside to help others. And you guys did that. So that is the first thing I want to do. The other thing I want to acknowledge is that Dana Johnson is being very modest, humble here. Dana, the brilliance of being able to have, to work with Select Cobb and their guidance, and for them to take this ball and run with it for you guys is a big deal. Dana, along with Stephanie Cox, they are rock stars. They did the hard work for this committee. And this would not have happened without them guiding and really basically just giving us a playbook for all of us to have real heart-to-heart discussions to make sure that we were on the right path. So I want to take a quick second, and just for the record, to put all of the members of my committee, our committee, that work with me and acknowledge their names. So I have Jeff South, I have Stuart Carlin, I have Terry DeWitt, I have Jason Gaines, I have Kevin Bryner, I have Kim Grish, I have Peter Hettlesman, I have John Loud, I have Donna Middlebrook, I have Greg Morgan, I have Bob Ott, who's incredible, I have R.G. Patel, Ellen Smith, Christina Greis, Nira Ball, Shelley Elder, Roseanne Hall, and Ed Richardson. All of those people made the phone calls, made the Zoom calls, the way we were doing this. And everybody showed true commitment. Some of our calls went for quite a long time. But it was really important that we made sure that we were united as a group and that if there was something to discuss or somebody had to raise a question, that we didn't let somebody go off to the side so that they could have something that wasn't answered and maybe down the road say, "Oh, yeah, I didn't necessarily agree with that." And I wasn't going to tolerate or be a part of that. And the other thing that was important to me was I was going to make sure that as a business owner in this community, that the money went where you guys wanted it to go. The money went to the people who needed it. And that it was distributed in a fair and equitable way. And no one can challenge that. If you look at the numbers that Dana put up on the demographics, that's something that was really, really surprising as we went to get together with that. So, you know, and we had businesses as, you know, as small as, you know, some people who were their own Uber drivers, who had licenses in this county, who were impacted. And we looked at that, and we looked at all those things to try to figure out how we could make sure this money went as far as we can, specifically on this Round Two with some people who did get the PPP fund. So I want to just let everybody know that the process, as far as we as a committee, we feel very, as a collective group, that it was a fair and equitable way and that it was our recommendation. it was our recommendation that we move forward. So the other piece of it, you know, to think that 3,647 well-deserving businesses will get a lifeline is something really big, and the checks are going to be massive, and it's going to be something that's going to be really, really helpful to small business. And I pray that we get this pandemic and this under control so that we don't have to stand here and have to try to do this to keep people in business. So I just recommend to everybody in the county to consider your health first and protect your employees and do the things that the science is saying that you should do. And the last thing I want to do is just acknowledge to the board that it was a pleasure for me to serve as the chairman of this committee. It is something that has brought me closer to the committee, to the county. I'm truly, truly, truly engaged, and I really want to just thank all of you, along with Dr. McMorris, who I know, the county manager. But the reality for me is this is something very special, and all of you should be, although you're doing this for others, all of you should be celebrated for making the decision to make sure that you did this. So with that in mind, on behalf of the committee, I want to say thank you, and thank you for all you guys have done to make and support this. So I'll turn it back to Dana if anything has questions.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, so I'll let Commissioner Ott carry the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say a few things. First off, Steve is being as equally humble as Dana. One of the things, and you know, we're sitting in on each one of the meetings, one of the things Steve did at the end of every meeting, or anytime anything was discussed, he, it was like going across the little squares on the screen. He would just go to every single person and say, I'm not sure you said anything, what do you think? And he made sure that every person in the committee had a comment every time. There was, nobody could just kind of sit in the background, and so Steve did a wonderful job of making sure that everybody's questions, concerns were all addressed. And I know that everybody on the committee felt like they were included and they were a part of the discussion and a part of the decision. And as Dana said, when the committee made their final decision on this list, it was unanimous. There was absolute 100% agreement. And as Steve said, it wouldn't have happened without Dana and Stephanie. As the chairman said yesterday, Dana is probably going to be looking at having to give Stephanie a raise. Stephanie was outstanding, along with all the rest of Dana's staff. You know, a lot of times this board doesn't agree on everything, but this is a prime example of how this board, together, all five, came together to help the citizens of this county by making sure that the businesses survive. You know, we talk about programs of giving rental assistance and eviction protection and all that, but I think everyone on this board knows that if people keep their job, they don't need food support, they don't need housing support, they don't need eviction protection when they have a job. And this program was about keeping people's jobs. And so I just am very proud of the fact that all five members of this board came together and worked together to create a program that then the citizens of the county, business owners, could give 15 or $48 million to businesses and then the $2 million we have for nonprofits. So I make a motion to approve the grant to the qualified applicants for the Small Business Grant Program as listed in the agenda. Thank you.
We have a second. Any other comments? Commissioner Burrow?
I have to comment. I'd like to thank you all too. Dana, you and your staff in the chamber in general have been phenomenal with not just coordinating everything for the $50 million grant program, but also helping us get the message out to the public through the business associations and our newsletters and the ads and everything that you did. Steve, you've done a great job being chair of a committee. That was a large group of people, and I'm sure it was hard to keep them all, you know, together, but you did a great job with the committee too, from what I've heard.
Thank you.
I can't tell y'all how much gratitude and comments I've received from small businesses of how this helped them stay afloat during this pandemic. So you truly have, we truly have made a difference in keeping businesses open and even thriving in a pandemic, so that says a lot. So thank you for all your hard work and dedication, and the board too, and Commissioner Ott for bringing this forward to us.
You're going to get a lot more calls, because a lot of people don't know, they're just going to find out if you do approve this.
I haven't told everybody who's on the list yet.
I haven't told anybody.
No, no, I'm saying so they're going to find out today.
Right.
And which district had the most, which district had the highest number?
Could you, could you turn over that microphone, please? Any other comments from the board? I just want to add one thing. When I called Steve Ewing and asked him to be chair of the board, it was one of those great conversations, like, say what? He had, he had no idea. And, you know, being the successful businessman that he is, he had a lot of questions and then wanted to get with Dana and then got back to me the next day and said he accepted it. But I don't think anybody saw the magnitude of this, of this effort. So you're truly a candidate for the Citizen of the Year for what you and the board have done, and I know that and the committee's done, but you have truly shown yourself to be a leader in the community and in this group here and how you brought them together. So thank you.
Thank you for that.
And if you never take another phone call from me, I understand.
That's all right. I will take all your calls. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Please, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And since we're still, that was part of the CARES funding. Commissioner Gambro, would you like to go ahead and make your motion on the, although we added to the agenda today, number 47?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on item number 47 to approve the First Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding with Home Free USA to reallocate the grant and fee amounts in order to be able to assist additional tenant applications.
Okay.
Second.
We have a second. And Dr. McMorris, could I just briefly address what we're doing here for the, those that are here and at home watching us online?
On this particular item, sir?
Yes.
So just to brief you on yesterday, we had all of the subrecipients come back and update the board on where they stood with their funding that had been given to them throughout the course of the CARES Act's needs. So as part of the Home Free update as it related to the rental portion of the subrecipient eligibility funds, what Ernest Davis reported was that we had far more application than funding, but within the original MOU, it was capped at the amount of, I believe, 400 applications that they could actually process. And of course, they received far more than that, and it was over 700 that they have in the pipeline. So what the board asked us to look at yesterday is to revise the MOU in partnership with Mr. Davis to see if we could take some of the existing funds that had been awarded to him and that program, in the rental program, and kind of shift it to allow him to be able to process some of those applications that are in the pipeline so that we can get more money out to those in need of rental assistance. So what this agenda item and MOU does is allows for more monies to go toward the process of applications so that more people can receive some of the funds. I believe the average amount was about $24, $2,500, and we had budgeted 48, up to 48. So it allows some flexibility in the existing amount of money that had already been approved by the board to go toward him applying more resources to those who are applying for the funds.
Thank you. And I think the new number in the MOU is 718. So we're going to go.
Yes.
Is that correct, Commissioner Gambro?
Yes. So we had 718 are currently in the process? Right. But we'd only funded up to 400.
But I thought the MOU stated 718, didn't it? The revised MOU that we're voting on right now?
Correct, 718, sir.
Yes.
Commissioner?
I got it. Actually, I believe it was supposed to be 750.
Right. But I thought what the admin fees and everything, the most we were going to be able to do was 718.
But I thought we had said that we would do up to 750.
Up, it's up to?
Correct.
Okay, that's why I'm just trying to get the number out there.
Right.
It should be 750, sir, so actually we will need to make that correction, because I don't see it.
Is it in there on the back side? Yep. You would go back to the MOU's under number three.
Okay, yeah. In the MOU, it does say 750.
Right.
I guess I'm just not seeing that in the agenda item, but the MOU does reflect.
750 grants being approved. So it is there.
There you go. I'm sorry, I didn't go, I didn't, I stopped at 718 for some reason. Okay, Commissioner Burrow, you have a comment?
Yes. This is just for the mortgage, not the rental, the $2 million for rental, correct?
Rental.
It's just the $2 million for rental?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
He had, he had remaining funds already in the mortgage program, so we didn't need to make any adjustments to that at this point.
Okay, good.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? So we have a motion, we have a second, and I'll call a question, all in favor. I'm sorry?
There's no need to.
No, the MOU has stated, has stated what we're going to vote on, as written.
Correct. The MOU, the agenda item doesn't reflect the number, but the MOU does reflect the correct number.
Okay, so with that, I'll call a question, all in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Thank you. Okay, on to the next part of the agenda, which is, Commissioner, Dr. McMorris, you're still here.
Yep, I'm still here. Okay, so item number 32, Chairman, is to ask the board to approve a contract extension with Holland and Knight LLP to provide, or to continue to provide, federal consulting and advocacy services to the county in connections with the CARES Act and general local government funding opportunities. As you are aware, we entered into an agreement with Holland and Knight during these unprecedented times with COVID-19, and so they came aboard and partnered with us from April to September. And at that time, we had no idea that we would still be dealing with COVID-19, where we would need some guidance with additional perhaps funding, guidance from the Treasury. So what I'm asking for today is for the board to extend the contract through the end of the year, so October 1 through December 30th, not to exceed $33,750, $700, rather, at the same amount of $11,250 per month, which is the same amount that we contracted with them during the executed agreement prior to. So the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract extension with Holland and Knight in an amount not to exceed $11,250 per month to provide federal consulting and advocacy services to the board and ask the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Okay, so moved?
Second.
Discussion? Comment, Commissioner Ott?
Yes, I just want to, I know some folks might have listened yesterday during the prep, agenda prep, but one of the things, and I know that there's been a lot of discussions on this board about lobbyists, but those that were watching the meeting saw that we approved the agenda item for 20% of public safety salaries. We would not have known or would not have gotten a definitive answer on the ability to do that without the services of Holland and Knight. The CARES Act is, I don't even know how many pages it is, but it is very long and convoluted. And one of the things that Holland and Knight has done for the county is help us navigate our way through the CARES Act to be able to use it in the most beneficial way to the county and its citizens.
Thank you. Any other comments? So we have a motion and a second. I'll call a question, all in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McMorris.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, on to DOT.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. DOT has seven items for consideration. The first item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a supplemental agreement number one to the Transportation Enhancement Agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation in the amount not to exceed $175,038 for Big Shanty Road sidewalks.
Motion to approve.
Second discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you, sir. Our second item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one to the contract with Lawson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $47,500 for redway improvements on Cherokee Street.
Commissioner Burrow, Gambro?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you, sir. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one to the contract with Baldwin Paving Company, the savings to the project in the amount of $260,913 for safety and operational improvements on Beach Road, West Side Drive, and approve supplemental agreement number one to the contract in an amount not to exceed $260,913 for said project. Approve a project time extension through April 30th of 2021 and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
We have a second? Discussion? Call a question, all in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $28,080.75 for drainage system repairs on Retner Drive.
Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
We have a second? Discussion? Call a question, all in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with D&amp;H Contracting Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $21,388.19 for drainage system repairs on Woodland Brook Drive.
Commissioner Ott?
So moved.
We'll second? Discussion? Call a question, all in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you, sir. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number three to the consultant services agreement with HNTB Corporation in an amount not to exceed $30,000 for engineering services on Wendy Hill Road, Tiramore Road Connector.
Commissioner Ott?
So moved.
We have a second? Discussion? Call a question, all in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. And our last item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $112,647.50 for drainage system repairs on Stafford Place.
Commissioner Ott?
So moved.
We'll second it? Any discussion? Call a question, all in favor, raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Erica. Okay, Information Services?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Our first item this morning is a joint item with the Police Department to request the Board of Commissioners approve a project agreement with Controlled Access, Inc., for the installation of the county's enterprise surveillance system at the new police headquarters building located at 430 Commerce Park Drive. This project is an eligible project under the 2016 SPOS Support Services Technology Improvements Program X0020. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a project agreement with Controlled Access, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $143,625. Authorize a 10% contingency fund in an amount not to exceed $14,362.50. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
We have a second? Discussion? Call a question, all in favor, raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our second item this morning is for the purchase of a new ecosystem for the county's new data center. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchasing director to purchase technology infrastructure and installation services greater than $100,000 under provisions of the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance Contract, SYNNEX NCPA 01-97, Advanced Technology Solutions, with authorized reseller, Process Information Systems, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $870,506.77 for a new ecosystem for the new Cobb County data, which is a 2016 SPOS Project X0010. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Ott?
So moved.
Second discussion? All in favor, call a question, all in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. And our final item this morning is to request the Board of Commissioners approve a sole-source contract with Team Spatial LLC for Phase Four of the emergency location markers and the installation of a people counting system for parks. for Phase Four of the emergency location markers and the installation of a people counting system for parks. This is a 2016 SPOS Project X0020 in an amount not to exceed $437,969. Authorize a 10% project contingency in an amount not to exceed $43,796.90. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamber.
So moved.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Yeah, I'll wait. Okay, with that, I'll call a question. All in favor, raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
All right. There's no more public comment. Is that correct, Mr. Rowling?
Does he do property management? Did you do number 43? Oh. I didn't hear that. Okay.
Right, no public comment.
Okay, sorry.
So that, we have appointments, and I'm going to make a motion to authorize submission to Kennison Hospital Authority the names for consideration for appointment to the Kennison Hospital Authority to fill, to fill expired term for post four. Chris Poston, David Hafner, and Walter Robinson. Second discussion. See none. Call a question. All in favor, raise your hand. Passes five to zero. So we now have public, Commissioner comments. I'll start with Commissioner Otte.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the Chairman knows, this weekend, we had, I guess, the son of flood. You know, start with a flood and end with one, but we had only about three to five inches of rain, but the river crested at 20 feet, which is considered a major flood. And I want to thank the Chairman and County Manager Jackie McMorris for joining me Sunday morning out there in the rain. These pictures, this is over on Cochise Drive. Next one. This one, I think, gives an idea of how much water, and this was at 5:00 in the afternoon on Sunday. So the water had already receded some. Next slide. What's that?
That was all three. I got videos for you.
Oh, okay. Do you have the video? This is Canoe Restaurant, and you can see the river in the background, but also, one of the things with the floods is that the water doesn't just flow in the river, it flows across all the property. I think there's one more video. The other video is Columns Drive. Now, the police officer mentioned, we had a fish slum across there when he was directing the traffic. And that water there is, when I was standing in it, was ankle deep. So what I want to do is, I just want to, I want to, especially with the, in light of public safety appreciation, I want to talk about the folks who are out there with us. From Fire Station 21B's crew, Engine 21 was Lieutenant Derek Carlson, Engineer Corey King, firefighter Jason Law. Truck 21 was Captain Brian Doherty, Engineer Eric Newkirk, and firefighter Dimitri Mitchell. Rescue 21 was firefighter Pete Sangmelli, firefighter Charlie Zellers. And from DOT, Corey Harrison, Leroy Rivers, Andrew Carter, Dean Scott, Brandon Legace, Yaski Brutus. And then some other DOT folks that were not out on Columns Drive, but were out dealing with the sinkholes in the trees. Jesse Merchant, Kadim Campbell, Donald Scott, James Reed, and two very special people. Officer Tankersley was standing with myself and the Chairman. Just kind of interesting how people react when you put things out, but probably the most notable mention needs to go to Officer Downey. Officer Downey works the morning shift. Now, for those of you not familiar with what that means to police officers, that's the midnight shift to the rest of us. So he stayed over, and he was out there with us. I got out there about 9:00, no, actually about 8:30 Sunday morning, and he was there with us until about 3:00 in the afternoon. So he had been up all night on his regular shift and stayed on to help because we were swamped with so many responses from the police. So I think Officer Downey shows the quality people that we have in our public safety, in addition to all the other names I've mentioned. But here's a young man who was up all night and then stayed because we needed his help. So my hat's off to all of you that came out and helped us. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Otte. Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, and echoing the presentations today, just want to thank the men and women of public safety for all that you do in keeping our community safe. Go to the next slide. This past weekend, we had a free COVID testing, voter registration, and census signup event in the Riverside area. And certainly want to thank Family Health Centers of Georgia, the Austell Community Task Force, and other members of the community for coming out and helping to make this a successful event. As was shared, oh, I thought that was cut off. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and just want to encourage women, and was shared today, men, to get tested to ensure that you're healthy and to at least detect if you have breast cancer as soon as possible to increase your likelihood of overcoming. I typically hold an anti-bullying event in October to recognize October as anti-bullying month. However, with schools being out, we didn't coordinate it this year, but just want to continue to encourage our students. And it's shameful to say, some of our adults, to unite against bullying. It's ridiculous to think how much activity has already started around voting. There used to be a push for people to vote on Election Day in November, and I think I received some numbers that already 57,000 votes have been, have been submitted or have actually occurred to date. And so just want to encourage the public to, to vote. I know that we've received reports of very long lines at some of our early voting sites, of which I will further address in, in a video that I'll show. But I'm encouraged by the number of people who have waited it out to make sure that their vote was cast. But I know we could have done better. I think we should do better so that people are not waiting eight to 10 hours in line to vote in Cobb County in the year of 2020. So I think this is a video that will play. This was on CNBC. If we can get some sound.
Here are some of the latest numbers from the U.S. Elections Project. Close to 10 million people already cast their ballots. In 2016, only 1.4 million had done so by this point. This is Cobb County today outside Atlanta. Voters waiting in line for hours. That's today. They've been voting for a while down in Florida. Tonight, they're already counting. Data from the U.S. Elections Project shows one of the nation's highest voter turnout rate.
I just want to show Commissioners just what our citizens experienced voting yesterday. And, you know, it's one thing to understand that there's energy and excitement around voting, but it's also another thing to, to question whether or not our voters had to experience something like that. I know I've talked to seniors, some who've had to wait in line for very lengthy periods of time that was not expected. We knew from since the primary that this was going to be a record turnout election, and we could have done something about it. On July 27th, the Elections Board brought it to our attention that they desire to have each of our voters receive a mailed absentee ballot at a cost of $200,000. This Board chose not to move forward with that. But yet, I wonder how much it costs for our poll workers to have to stay late, some to 10:00 at night, to process the number of our citizens that were in line. While I said I'm encouraged to see our citizens stick through it, I know many did not. Some went home. I know yesterday was a holiday, so at least enabled a lot of people to go vote without having to take time off of work. But I encourage you to know that this is not a condition that we should ignore. When people talk about voter suppression, it's these type of events that they refer to, and it's not a matter of the mind when they're standing on their two feet for hours in line. So, you know, I'm just bringing this to the public's attention because I want you to know that this should be brought to each Commissioner's attention. And when it's in our power to do something about it, especially when our Elections Board makes a decision about it, I strongly believe that we should consider that. Moving on, just want to thank all the citizens of Cobb County that tuned in to our virtual HOA boot camp over the weekend. This is our first year that we've done it via Zoom. This is our fifth year holding the boot camp. It is always informative. We've had attorneys. We had former Board members. We had staff, thank you to staff, that attended from Police and Community Development, and also from DOT that was on that, on that Zoom meeting. I just appreciate everything that goes into this to help empower our residents to have well-functioning and managed HOAs. As being a former HOA president, I know that sometimes your residents will call you before they call 911. And it's like, you know, our citizens have to step up a lot when they serve on these boards. So just thank you for just coming out and everybody sharing all the lessons that they've learned in serving on their HOA to help educate others. Certainly want to thank the Faith in Blue team for organizing this event with public safety over the weekend. It was a rainy Saturday, but it was still a good and bright shining Saturday for many of our community leaders and members of public safety who were able to get out and march in unity to show the appreciation that citizens in South Cobb have for their police. And just want to thank the organizers for holding that event. In light of breast cancer awareness, there was a run also this weekend. This was a packed weekend. And we had a 5K walk. I don't really watch too much TV. I don't know who Miss Basketball is, but she pulled out a crowd, and so it was a great event. We had a number of people from the District Attorney's Office who were present to participate in the 5K. I believe Jesse Evans, who's pictured next to me in the light blue t-shirt, came in fourth for the men. He always does a great job. And we have DA Holmes out there and Monique Sheffield. And want to thank our employees for coming out and supporting a good cause over the weekend. Those are the end of my announcements.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. I'd first like to thank Mr. Strongman for dedicating eight years of service in the U.S. Navy and for adopting these two adorable kittens. He's the latest in our superior pets for patriotic bits. Recently, the Town Center Community Alliance, nonprofit partner of the Town Center Community Improvement District, completed the installation of a restored and refurbished 1964 Beechcraft A-23 Musketeer airplane at Aviation Park. Several partners contributed to the making, to making this project a reality. The plane was donated to the alliance by Hawthorne Aviation, restored by DLK Aviation Incorporated, and the engineering design and installation was provided by Denise. And other partners included Fly LBI, Priority Jet, and Brahma Marketing. So this is a great addition to Aviation Park with a lot of history there, right next to Cobb County International Airport. On your ballot this year, you'll be asked to renew the special purpose local option sales tax for another six years. SPOS is a one-cent sales tax used for projects in the county. The project list also contains multiple public safety projects, a new animal shelter, parks, and library safety enhancements, and funding for projects in Cobb six cities. And you can go to the website, cobbcounty.org, and look at SPOS 2022 for all the project lists and identified projects on the list. This year, we have 16 drop-off locations listed here for absentee ballots. It's available 24/7. It's secure. You don't have to wait in line. You go in and drop it off. And you have until November 3rd, Election Day, at 7:00 PM. It's a safe and very easy and convenient way to vote absentee. And then we also have advanced voting, which started yesterday at, I believe, 10 locations throughout the county. And they're all listed here. You can also go to Cobb Board of Elections' website and pull up their list as well for both. Keep Cobb Beautiful in Precinct One are hosting Medication Disposal Day. You can safely dispose of unused or expired medicine at our Free Cobb Medication Takeback Event. Law enforcement and county staff will be at two locations from 10:00 to 2:00 on Saturday, October 21st, to collect medications and properly dispose of them in compliance with federal law. And this is for, for expired medicine that's sitting around your house that you want to dispose of properly. And you can go to Precinct One, the Superstation at 2380 Cobb Parkway in Kennesaw, or the Freeman Pool Senior Center at 4025 South Hurt Road in Smyrna. Again, thank you to all of our public safety officers and personnel that received awards and were nominated. You saw them all this morning, and we can't thank them enough for what they do day in and day out to protect us and keep us safe in the county. So your, our thoughts and prayers are with them daily, and we appreciate all the hard work they do for us. Last week during Public Safety Week, I attended an event through the chamber, but also sponsored by Capital City Home Loans for the City of Marietta Public Safety. And it was a great event. We were, we were all invited. I think some of us were, were out there that day. But it was a great event. They provided lunch and for all the fire, police, EMS, and public safety officers. Also, Keep Cobb Beautiful in the county are hosting a Household Hazardous Waste Collection event on Saturday, October 31st, from 9:00 to noon. Household hazardous waste are products used around the house that contain chemicals hazardous to the health of humans, animals, and the environment. The annual Household Hazardous Waste Event will be held at 2435 East West Connector in Austell. You can remain in your vehicle and bring your old paint cans and insecticide and whatever you have that's hazardous, and the county will take it from you. So you can visit keepcobbbeautiful.org for more information and as to what is accepted, what items are accepted for this event. And then stay tuned, subscribe to our newsletters, and stay updated on the district at cobbcounty.org/burl. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And before I go to my slides, Brad, the elections yesterday, we had 7,652 voters. And just out of statistics, 1,386 of those voters had also requested an absentee ballot. And what this means is that when you go to vote, that ballot then has to be canceled, which does slow down the voting time again. So if you've requested an absentee ballot, we do have ballot drop boxes that you can use at that time. You are also welcome to visit the county website and go to the elections, and you can see wait times at the various locations as well. Next, All Roof Solutions. As you remember, last month, we were talking about their roof giveaway for a veteran or first responder. Their voting has gotten underway, and you can go to All Roof Solutions Facebook page to check out the 14 nominees. And once they get your feedback, representatives from All Roof Solutions Incorporated and All Restorations Solutions LLC will select the grand prize winner, which will be announced on November 11th of 2020. Next, our Gamble's Great Pumpkin Day is coming up this Saturday, and the weather looks to be great. You can join us for some fall fun presented by the Still Family Farm to support Safe Path Children's Advocacy Center. Activities include roly-polies, hayrides, pumpkins, zinnia flower maze, and the best apple cider in West Cobb. Also, if there's going to be the cornhole competition, do not challenge Ryan. That's all I'm saying. Also, we will have animal controls, adopt a pet van, touch a fire truck, meet and greet with our Cobb County Police Officers, and much more. $2 off admission with a donation of disinfectant wipes or sprays, mask and facial tissues, or paper towels will be accepted, and all these items will be donated to Safe Path. The Still Family Farm entrance is at 5682 Macklin Road in Powder Springs. And for more information about the event, you can visit stillfamilyfarm.com. Which brings us to our pumpkins that have come to our VOC room. We are doing a Gamble's Great Giving Contest as well, where we're going to have people go, and you can go to safepath.org and make a donation in honor of your favorite pumpkin. And whoever essentially collects the most money will be our top pumpkin. These pumpkins were provided to us by our various departments, so thank you very much for participating in this. You can go to my newsletter to find out the number that coordinates with the department. But number one was our Cobb County Public Library Systems, Oscar the Grouch with Pet Worm Slimy. Our county clerk's office was the Bubbling Beauty. Our county purchasing department was the Piggy Bank. Our sheriff had a kind of haunted house, different Halloween themes on it. Our water department is the Scarecrow. Our information services is the Ghostly Wifi. Our senior services was Carl Fredrickson's from Up Movie. And they are a little competitive out there. Our water department had the Night of the Ghost. Our UGA Cobb County Cohort Extension was Sudsy Suzie Chilaxing. Our attorney's office had the much-needed Spa Day. Our DOT department had Boo. And our Board of Commissioners had Crazy Glamorous and Cool. Again, all proceeds will benefit Safe Path Children's Advocacy Center. And last, the pumpkins that we have on the Diaz in front of us today were designed by our very own clerk's department, Leela Washington. As you may call, Judith Bowers had designed our personal pumpkins last year, and Leela did it for us this year. And if you would like more information, see Leela. Thank you.
Okay. Couple updates where we are. This is on the, pleased to announce that this weekend, we finally got under the famous 100, 100,000 number, and we're still under 5% on the COVID positive test rate. But there's still much to be done. But the good news is that the community has worked with us with our education and information campaign in partnership with the healthcare community to invite, to inform people of the importance of the three W's: wearing a mask, washing your hands, and watching your distance. So we've got to keep at this. We're far from being out of the woods, but I am pleased to see that we're in a better place than we were two months ago. But we're still at high risk, even with under 100 per 100,000. And we need to get down to 50 per 100,000, be in a range where we can be a little bit more comfortable about getting about our daily lives. Okay? The census, Jason Grains has done an incredible job with his team of getting us over 70% during the pandemic. The challenges were certainly extraordinary, and yet we have exceeded our response rate from last year. The federal government, the court system has allowed us to continue the census through the end of October. This is so important because not only does it involve the redrawing of the district lines for representatives, but also qualifying for federal grants and a number of programs that are important to us here in the county, particularly CDBG and CSBG. Those acronyms, if you don't mean much to you, they mean a lot to us here at the County because they address the, what I call in our faith community, the least and the lost. And we need to, we have a lot of needs here in the county. It's extraordinary that even as wealthy as we are here in Cobb County, we still have 20% of the population under the federal poverty line, and that, ladies and gentlemen, represents over 140,000 people. So this census is important, that we get the count out so we can get qualified for federal funds to continue to address so much of the needs of our community. All right? All right, just a couple of little comments. I also want to congratulate all our public safety. This board has done a magnificent job over the last three years of doing much to increase our resources to them and also give them the confidence that we put our money where our mouth is. And I just want to thank all that they've done here to make this a county where we can all safely, work, play, and pursue our dreams. This weekend, I was very pleased that, as I was working with Commissioner Ott, that I made a number of phone calls, starting with Cassie Maslam, who's our Director of Emergency Management. She was really, really working hard here to address a multitude of challenges here in the community, and my hat's off to her. But what really gave me a lot of comfort is that when I spoke with Erica at DOT, when I spoke with Bill Tanks at Public Services, when I spoke with Chief Cox and Director Kreider, they were all speaking from the same sheet of music. So they all knew what had to be done, so I just simply was showing up to show support. And that just goes to show you the incredible professionalism of our staff, and I couldn't be more pleased by the response to them. The last thing I want to talk about is voting. Yeah, it's unfortunate that in this day and age, we have politicized the voting process. But that's the country we live in right now. We've been through these times before, and we'll get through them. Yesterday was the first day of early voting. I think it must be, it's important to remember that on November 3rd, we're going to have roughly 144 precincts open for the public to vote. And that's traditionally when people, you know, are reminded to do their civic duty. But yesterday, we had, I believe, 10 or 11 early voting sites. But more importantly, starting last spring, the Board of Elections sent out applications for absentee ballots. And if you're 65 or older, I might be wrong in the age, but certainly if you're a senior of that age group, of which I am one, if you check the box, you would get an absentee ballot for all the elections, for all elections after the primary. So a significant number of people in this county, you know, are qualified for that. But as we saw yesterday, listening to Commissioner Gamble, we have, and the political parties on both sides are to blame for this. They have created the narrative that the various venues we're using to vote, not all of them can be trusted. And I can't even imagine what it is to be like a member of the U.S. postal system right now, that their work is being challenged, that if you drop something from the mailbox, your ballot may not get to the Board of Elections. I can't imagine what it's like to be a poll worker right now, when every time you turn around, you know, you're being questioned that what you're doing is not enough. This board, a couple of months ago, appropriated, approved $300, over $300,000 to put camera systems over 16 drop boxes in this county. And we still have people who don't believe that those drop boxes are trustworthy. This is extraordinary. So you can believe what you want to believe. You can stand in line, but I look at lines this way. Of course, they're inconvenient. But here's what the symbol of those lines means to people who don't live in this country when they see those pictures. They represent that ragtag group of American patriots who fought the American Revolution between 1775 and 1783. If you've never read the American Revolution, you need to look at the stories of these men and women who devoted much to what was probably a lost cause in many eyes, fighting the greatest power on the face of the earth, Great Britain. The challenges they went through, Valley Forge, the challenges they went through trying to get Congress to come up with the money to give them the funds they needed to fight the British, where the war was won, believe it or not, not in the north part of this country, but in the south. When the British were sucked out of New York to come down here, where a band of patriots in the form of Francis Marion and others through guerrilla warfare finally convinced the British public that this war wasn't fighting and gave us, you know, gave us our freedom through these incredible patriots. So if you had to stand in line, think about standing in line for those. Think about standing in line for those who fought to preserve the Union and free the slaves. Think about those who marched on the bridge in Selma and died and got hurt and nearly died. Think about those who fought for the farm workers in California, Cesar Chavez. Think about those who fought in the 100th Infantry Regiment, even though their parents were confined in prison camps in California and other parts of the country during World War II. What is it worth to you to stand in line for one of the greatest freedoms we have here in this country called voting? And those who fought for that right that we have here today. So here's what standing in line means to me, that every time you show this photograph of standing in line, if you're in China, or if you're in North Korea, or if you're in Belarusia, it shows that in this country, people will stand in line to do what it takes to show that the people are in charge. That's what the lines say to me. And I realize that, you know, right now, the weather's not the greatest, but I think that everyone who stands in line stands for all those Americans who went before us, that gave us this freedom to do what is the most important thing that I believe that our former government responds to, which is to hear the will and voice of the people through the ballot box. So whether you believe in using the mail system, whether you believe in the drop box, whether you believe in going to early voting, whether you believe in going to regular voting, those who go and do this are the true heroes right now. And those who choose not to do it, you might want to ask yourself, what it is about this country that you don't like, that you won't go and do your duty and vote, whether today, tomorrow, or November 3rd, whether in the mail, or the drop boxes, or standing in line? So that, we're adjourned.